Okay. On behalf of the Sutherland Board of Finance, I'd like to welcome everyone to this public hearing on the 2024-2025 budget. Today is Monday, March 4th, 2024. Let us stand for a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you.
In the audience, we have many elected officials I'd like to recognize so the public can be aware of who they are. I'll introduce you by group and just stand so the public could put a name with it, with a face. Anybody from the town council? Board of Education? Planning and zoning? Town clerk? I want to explain the process used to develop the budget levying taxes. While we are one town, our budget essentially developed in two parts. There's the Board of Education budget and the general government budget. At a high level, the elected Board of Education presents an educational programming or an operations budget to the Board of Finance. At the same time, the town manager presents the general government budget. Included in the budget are revenue items, predominantly state grants, interest income, and local service fees, and then expense items. The expenses are much greater than the revenue, and once the budget is approved, taxes will be levied to make up the difference. The town maintains a grant list, which includes all residential and commercial property, vehicles, and business property. These assets are assigned a value based upon their market value. The amount of money needed to balance our budget is levied to the owners of property based on the value of the property they own. In the private sector, which is much like a family setting, your income and your assets determine what your expenses can be. In, in the public government sector, the spending is determined first, and the income required to meet that spending is determined second, and then levied on the taxpayers. When you are spending someone else's money on other people, it requires careful oversight. Without careful oversight, it's easy to both overspend and overtax. The Board of Finance, your elected citizen volunteer board, exists to carefully review the budget, the financial health of the town in conjunction with the needs and desires of the town residents and businesses, while considering the health of the state, the overall economy, and its impact on our citizens. In a careful oversight process, the Board of Finance will recommend a budget to the town council. Once the town council approves a budget, the Board of Finance will then set the mill rate. The complexities or risk factors we face as we recommend this budget are the impacts of inflation, which is cumulative, and other factors that have driven up the cost of service. While the rate of inflation has thankfully decreased, the higher prices still challenge us. Our health insurance costs and the post-pandemic usage, so we have, cost is up, usage is up. And due to the significant spending increases put forth by our leaders, and they'll both consider these high spending based upon our standards, we may have knowingly excluded needs within the community. Sometimes when the budget's high, higher than they would expect, they'll leave things out, those things could potentially be needs. So that, those are risk factors we have. One note on inflation being cumulative, when you, people talk about interest rates and different things, they can go up and they can come down. In, inflation behaves differently. In, inflation, when it, when it goes up, usually it's a couple percent a year, but if it, if it has a spike, which it did, the effect of that spike remains with you. While the, while the trajectory of future inflation may have come down, that's great. The, the increase or the spike we saw over the last couple of years remains with us. So, things like rent and groceries, they won't just automatically fall down. As we introduce the 23-24 budget, keep in mind a few points. We remain a healthy community and we have significant reserves. We did receive COVID relief funds, we continue to use our American Rescue Plan Act funds for identified and approved capital projects. And this use of federal funds benefits the local taxpayers because we've applied them to projects that local taxpayers would have ordinarily had to fund. The total budget request is 182.4 million, which is 9.4 million more than the current year budget of 173 million. The Board of Education is seeking an increase of 6.9 million or 6.2%. General government, including debt service, is seeking an increase of 2.5 million or 4%, but when you adjust for tax-neutral revenue, the general government budget is going up 1.8 billion or 3%. The impact on the mill rate, the impact is 1.48 mills or an increase of 4.87% tax increase. The property, just for example, a property assessed at $200,000 would be appraised at 286,000, and will see a tax increase of $423 from $8,674 to $9,097. The mill rate will move up from 30.36 to 31.84. And that's how it's, that's how it came to us. We haven't done anything with it yet, except took a peek and wrote this speech. Included is the use of excess fund balance or rainy day fund for capital projects in the amount of around $2 million, in line with last year. The excess rainy day fund comes from spending that was withheld in prior years, so it accumulates a surplus, and this amount is in line with what was used last year, and that's used for capital. The Board of Education budget includes educational programming and not the buildings or teacher retirement, which together equal the total cost of education. The buildings fall upon the general government side of the budget, and teacher retirement is currently funded by the state. The town serves in a capacity like a landlord with the school buildings, but since we are one community, no rent is exchanged. As you may know, Sutherland has completely renovated many of its schools, and Sutherland carries a significant debt burden for school renovations, and, you know, just if you look at that in totality, the schools and education are very important to, to Sutherland as a whole. Currently, the Board of Finance is in the process of reviewing the budget to understand the revenue estimates, the spending needs as expressed by the town manager and Board of Ed. The Board of, Board of Finance is collaborating with the taxpayers, like we do here tonight, to determine their priorities and thoughts regarding the budget. Every member of the Board of Finance is committed to collaborating with all stakeholders, assessing the economy, asking questions, seeking input, serving as a voice of reason, and ultimately making a fiscally responsible recommendation to the town council. You are here tonight to provide valuable input to us as we work towards finalizing our recommendation. We are committed to being a government which respects, works for, and is accountable to its citizens. Taxpayers can participate in the process by reviewing the budget, voicing opinions, watching meetings and workshops in person, or by streaming the meeting videos on the web, and also collaborating with us as we move towards a final recommendation. All citizens should remember that we strive to do what's in the best interest of the entire town of Sutherland, both for the short term and the long term. As we work towards a budget, we must remain mindful that Sutherland is made up of over 43,000 people and many diverse businesses, each with different needs, different expectations, different financial situations, and different stages of life, impacted differently from the economy, possessing different views on the role of government, and holding different opinions on the scope of education that should be provided to our youth. Our recommendation must consider the economic diversity of our people, and we also must consider risks facing our community. On an ongoing basis, this board asks a lot of questions in public and in private, collaborates with many people, strives for responsible spending, seeks to eliminate waste, drive transparency, and encourages management to set a vision, to prioritize, and ultimately seek the most cost-effective way to finance government operations. This is what we are committed to do. We'll now hear from any other Board of Finance member wishing to speak. Just a reminder, um... Okay. Just a reminder that our emergency exits are over here. If you come this way, come out this way, where you go out the back door to the right and the left. Bathrooms are farther out, and the AED is on the wall out that door to the left. Keep those safety features in mind. And now we'll hear from our town manager to present his remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the board. First I'd like to do is ask the group over to my left, back there. Can you guys stand for one second, please? I want you to, these are the hardest working people in the town of Sutherland, and please give them a round of applause. This budget, a lot of hard work, and 90% of it came from those individuals back there. The other 10% comes from this gentleman over here, Mr. Bo is our finance director. Thank you, Jim, very much. As you mentioned, sir, the operational budget for the town of Sutherland is increasing by 1,846,444. That's 3.9%. There's really four drivers to this. The biggest one is contingency, and I'll get to that in a second. You mentioned inflation. Inflation is still with us, so when it comes, when it came to actually hiring new people, of course, I'm always in the position where I want to hire new people. In this particular case, we're only hiring one new individual in the town, and that's going to be a new police officer. So, the first one is the Science Police Department, that's an increase of $400,000, which is 4.4%. That includes a new officer, and also includes the command restructuring of the police department. You'll see that, you heard that the other night when the, when the police gave their presentation. The second one is health insurance. That affects the town, affects the Board of Ed. We're going up by $352,000, 8.3%. Once again, that's something that we cannot control. Now here's contingency, which I think is the biggest one I want to talk to you about. I want to get back to $850,000. As you know, over the years, we tried to get back to that number, it always got cut, got cut, so we are at $600,000 now. As you know, so far we're lucky with, with the snow, but we haven't been lucky with a couple of legal cases, so we've been taking hits out of that. So I want to bring the contingency back up to $800,000, $850,000, and I also want to add an additional contingency for, for the next fiscal year alone of $380,000. What is that for? First of all, it's utility costs. Our utility contract ends in November, so we have to anticipate the costs of that. We did lock in a price, so we know what it's going to be, but instead of allocating that to each individual department, we're going to have any contingency, and each department will come to us when they come to that time period. I'm also allocating monies to early voting. We really have no idea what that's going to cost. The regulars are all over the place, so I allocate additional funds for that, and also non-budgetary salary increases. As you know, we just finished one unit contract, we're in the middle of arbitration for another unit contract, so therefore there's going to be monies necessary for that. So the contingency is going to be $1,167,000. Uh, I'm sorry, the, the contingency is going to be $850,000 plus $380,000. If you add all those together, those, those I just talked about, it's $1,167,000. That's 63% of the total increase to the town. So if you look at that, all the rest of that is for the rest of the departments, so those big hits are the ones that, that are going to be driving this issue. Also, you mentioned the use of unvisited fund balance. We're using $1,987,500. That's something that we started years ago, and it's something that is very important to the town because it takes things off the bonding wheels. And as you know, bonding is expensive, it's getting more expensive every day with the interest rates, so I, I'm asking for the following. I'm asking for $650,000 for the first half of the Science High School bleachers and press box. I'm asking $487,500 for the salt shed, the first half of the salt shed, and I'm asking for the remainder, which is necessary for the fire truck, and that's $850,000. And remember, we put money aside of last year's budget for that. So those three together equal the total amount of $1,987,500. So that's really the driving force in this year's, this year's coming budget. Debt service, which was obviously a big issue last year, is less of an issue this year, but I still want the financial director to give a briefing point on it. Mr. Bo.
And I said brief.
Mr. Schulte asked me to be brief, starting with, uh, back in 1972, um, the 24-25 general fund budget that we have in front of you, uh, that is in front of all of us as citizens and taxpayers, requested by the town manager, includes $13,63,325 for debt service owed on bonds in which the town has already sold. Broken down as follows: approximately $9.8 million in principal and approximately $3.3 million in interest. That's what we will owe at the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, 2024, as we go into the new year. Overall, this is an increase, sorry, a decrease of $43,342, uh, lower than the fiscal year that we're in now, 23-24. The reason being is that we didn't issue bonds in this fiscal year. The primary driver of the next bond issue is going to be, uh, the second issue for the, for the library project, which, as you remember, has been kind of pushed back a little bit in its time completion schedule, so we did not need to sell bonds in this fiscal year for that. I anticipate selling bonds in this coming fall, probably September or Octoberish, and it looks like it's going to be in the realm of $12 million. Approximately 11 million of that's going to be for the library. In addition, uh, so there's a one six-month payment in the spring of 2025 of approximately $300,000 in interest on that $12 million. Hoop on rates right now in year one, two, three are somewhere, somewhere in the 5% range, believe it or not, and they start to come down a little bit, sort of in the years three, four, and five. Sort of an inverted yield curve, which is a little bit, but anyway, um, if we did not have to issue that, our actual, our actual costs for debt service would be reduced by 343,000 and change, instead of just 43,000 and change. So that's going to be the impact on the next bond issue that we sell. Uh, and just as, just for general knowledge, at the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, 2024, we will have $108.6 million of outstanding principal on our debt issuance and approximately $21 million of interest owed on bonds that we've already sold. So, uh, that's a brief summary, and obviously, uh, I've been working with you folks on the board very often.
Do you have the $15 million for the roads in your calculations?
That, that is in my projection of what's going to happen over the next several years, but in your, in your issue, the, the bond, the budget that you have before you, no, because we won't be issuing bonds, uh, at least probably for the first year of that, after, after hopefully approval of that contract. So, with that, if there's any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll call upon our Board of Ed Chair, Mrs. Colleen Clark, and the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Stephen Medanson.
Good evening, Chairman Leary, board members, and members of the community. Superintendent Medanson and I are here to share information with you about the approved Board of Ed operating budget for the 2024-25 fiscal year. This represents a 6.24 increase over the current year's budget. The budget process was not an easy one for the board, as the needs of the students are increasing along with the unfunded mandates, while promised state funding has been decreased. While the job of Board of Education is to advocate for students, we must also be cognizant of the financial resources of the community. I feel the work done by the Board and the resulting budget recognizes that balance. As always, communication and collaboration is something we look forward to, as I know we all want to do our best work for our children and our community. With that being said, let me introduce Superintendent Stephen Medanson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of Board of Finance and members of the community, President Seaman. As Mrs. Clark, as should already, presented to you on February 14th, was a 6.24% requested increase over the prior year's operating budget. While I understand this is a more significant increase than in years past, the level service bud, budgets presented over the past two years brings us to a point where needs can no longer be tabled. Weekly, I meet with teachers across the district, often just listening, and sometimes using the meetings as opportunities to inform or provide context to discussion items where there may be confusion or misinformation. I am staffed with roughly 75 teachers in individual or small group meetings this year. Themes are consistent. Teaching is hard right now. Mental health and support staff are more vital than ever before. Class sizes provide real challenges for specific cohorts or grades where students may be developmentally at certain points in their educational journey. Administrators are constantly tasked with competing priorities and demands for time. They are continually being pulled away from educational leadership to tend to students in crisis, complete investigations, or deal with overly complex procedures derived from state and federal laws. Upon becoming Superintendent in 2022, I inherited the complex task of ushering the district out of a turbulent financial time that consisted of reliant on federal grant funds in one operating budget, understanding the economic challenges present in the community coming out of the pandemic and another budget season, and accounting for record levels of inflation during last year's budget season. We are at a time where this budget can set us on a more stable path financially in future budget years. I hope that working with you over the past two years, I have earned your trust that what I have presented is genuinely needed and has been as transparent as possible throughout the budget process. As evidence of that, I'd like to point out two specific examples. In my first budget presented, the district closed out that fiscal year with less than one-half of 1% remaining, with no spending down, in a budget of approximately $104 million. Last year, during my second budget cycle as superintendent, I indicated in meetings and a letter to the community that anything less than the funding needed to maintain a level services budget would eliminate positions. Some were upset that this was communicated during the process, had thought it was a bit disingenuous, as comments like this had been made over the years, and seen more as a scare tactic or a threat during budget seasons. I was appealing for full funding, so we were not faced with such a scenario. Ultimately, after not receiving full funding, the board was tasked with making an extremely difficult decision to eliminate six teaching positions at the middle school and a maintenance position. The effect that has had on the sixth-grade class sizes is something those teachers have reminded me often of during my middle school meetings this year. I look forward to collaborating with all of you in the upcoming budget workshops to answer any questions you may have as we work towards a budget that meets the educational needs of the students in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the purpose of this public hearing is to hear your opinions. The rules are as follows. All Sutherland taxpayers are invited to address the Board of Finance. To allow fairness, each person will be given three minutes to address the board. Each speaker will speak from the podium, so their voice can be heard by us, the audience, and the video equipment. I ask the audience to remain respectful as diverse opinions are shared, and, again, a reminder, Reverb is here, it's here, and in the back are the AED out to the left, and bathrooms straight back. So if anybody would like to address us regarding the budget, please come up to the podium.
Regardless, we are your rich voters, and what we're here for is, uh, to get that small amount put back into our, our, uh, operating budget. You see, it has grown, and it will grow even more because of early voting. The money that was taken out was raises for the, the great fires under deputies. Go ahead.
Yes. Um, the department has not had a raise in quite some time. Also, what I find a little discouraging is the people in our department get paid per hour less than the entry-level clerk in town hall. And now, since things have changed, we had to get certified, Augie and myself both had to take courses, take tests, get ourselves certified. Now with the early voting and same-day voting, uh, there's a lot of responsibility that we haven't even had in the past, and right now, there's also a lot of confusion, even on the state level, as to how this is all going to play out. So I think it's only fair that we get, in our department, at least what a national level clerk is getting in town hall.
We're talking very small money. Now, about early voting, I just came back from Florida and South Carolina, and they both, each town, the towns that we were in, they have buildings that say Election Department, and they are five to seven thousand square feet, and because of early voting. So I think we're just getting into it, we don't know what this is going to cost. Get ready for what's going to happen in the future for early voting. It is, it's, I don't think it's what everybody thinks it's going to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jason Williams, I'm a junior fourth super chace. I've got three kids in this school district, second grader Donasky, and two bur babies at preschool in Strong. My wife is also a teacher in the district. This budget cycle is an important one for the Sutherland schools. With students in need for mental health services, the change in kindergarten start dates is September 1st, the town schools dated materials and computers, consider this is not the time for the Board of Finance to override the BOE budget request and force additional cuts, like was the case last year. When VOF shortchanged the district last year towards cutting teaching positions, while this board kind of sidestepped, taking responsibility for these cuts by justifying them using the enrollment projections and saying that the VOE is responsible for implementing the budget, the reality is that class sizes were increased at the middle level, and, uh, attrition was used to cut staff, teachers were shuffled around, this caused unnecessary disruption to the quality of our education. The incumbent political party that runs this town needs to be as sensitive to the needs of our school district as they are focused in keeping the mill rate increases minimized. The reality is things have gotten more expensive across the board. The school budget is, always needs to increase to keep pace with the contractual obligations the town negotiated, and the education of young is, is of our youth is the biggest factor in the long-term economic health of the town and country. Sutherland's per-people spending is embarrassingly low compared to similar towns in Connecticut. While some may think this is a badge of honor, selling efficiencies, the reality is our buildings are falling apart, and we are falling behind, but not providing the level of support staff and, and class choices, I ask this board to look beyond the partisan politics and do the right thing for our children and families in the district. It's protecting the mill rate at all costs, we're selling out our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members. Uh, Shonkerville, as of at 1:19 P M. Tonight I come before you, not just as a member of this community who is deeply invested in the future of our town, but I come as a father of two school-aged daughters navigating their way through the school system. I urge you to consider the profound impact of fully funding the Board of Education's proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. As we envision the graduates of Sutherland, we see not just students with diplomas, but young adults equipped with skills, resilience, and empathy needed to navigate the complexities of the world. Yet achieving this vision requires more than just hopes and words. It requires a tangible support system and resources. In Sutherland's vision of a graduate, it states in part that, quote, "Students will need to think creatively and critically and contribute to the global community." The challenges brought about by the pandemic have left many of our students grappling with mental health issues. Many have faced learning loss, anxiety, depression, and even trauma. It's imperative that our schools are equipped with the provide, and provide the necessary support for these students. Fully funding the proposed budget would be a step in allowing schools to invest in mental health researches, provide support for staff dealing with student behaviors and anxieties, and cater to the unique and diverse needs of all students. Moreover, our students deserve nothing short of the best learning conditions, whether it's access to updating technology, modern facilities, or resources for extracurricular activities, our investment in education directly impacts the opportunities available to our youth. If we truly want our students to excel, we must provide them with the tools and the environment to thrive. I am well aware that this is just a financial party, but ultimately, the decision goes beyond financial figures. You speak of our commitment to the future of Sutherland, and the first step in my daughters and all other students to one day contributing to our global community is for the community that they live in to contribute to them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Leary, members of the Board of Finance. My name is Lindsay, I live at 26 Alice Lane. Thank you for your opportunity, for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I come to you before you as a mother of two elementary school children and a teacher here in town. I come to you before you as a mother of two elementary school children and a teacher here in town. As a parent, I can say that my children's experience in school has been nothing but wonderful. Both of my kids love the school they attend and the teachers and staff that fill the building. They share stories about the kind actions their teachers do on a daily basis to make them feel welcomed and successful. They talk about the resources in their classroom, the cultural arts programs provided by the PTO, and the new topics they are learning. My hope for them is that they continue to have a positive attitude towards school and continue to have dynamic teachers who challenge them to do their best. But to ensure that, as a town, we need to make sure that we keep the teachers that we have. We need to support the superintendent's proposed budget to make sure we do not have to cut valuable classroom teacher, teachers and resources. Cutting classroom teachers will directly impact class sizes and therefore the level of support students receive on a daily basis. In these increasingly challenging times, the need for support staff is greater than ever. And again, as a town, we need to make sure that we do what we can to hold on to these valuable employees. I would also like to talk to you tonight from another perspective. As a seventeen-year veteran teacher here in town, I am asking for support, the support of the town that has been my home for my entire career. I have loved working in this town, but as the years go by, the stresses of the world begin to fill our classrooms. I know teachers need more support. I can confidently say that the teachers in Southington are an amazing group of educators. We provide students with lessons that engage, challenge, and push them to learn and grow. We encourage them to work through the difficult concepts and become valued members of their school community. We also continue to do more with less, and at some point, the level of resources cannot go any lower. Schools need a certain amount of staff and resources and materials to function on a daily basis. Tonight, I am asking you to give us your support. Support teachers by providing the resources we need to successfully do our jobs. I am asking you to fund the superintendent's proposed budget, a budget that is needed to maintain, maintain a high level of success that comes directly from the teachers, support staff, paraeducators, and specialists that work with the students of Southington every day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom McDonald. I live at one fifty-one Ristol Street. Um, I came to you guys last year as a taxpayer here in the town of Southington. Come to you again as a taxpayer here in the town of Southington. Um, last year when I spoke to you, I came forward and asked you to consider what kind of town you want this to be. Because when we talk about funding our education system, the existential question is what town, kind of town do we want this to be? I watched pretty closely, a couple of hours ago, the Board of Education meeting where they agonized over what they can keep and what they can take out. And in my view, they did that so that it would make your job easier, and I hope your job tonight is very easy. Because I hope that we all want to have the successful town that people want to live in, that people want to send their kids to school with, and people don't have to flee because the education system is so poor. We have approximately an embarrassing amount of children in this town who do not live in homes, who live out of their cars. From what I saw from that meeting, the approximate amount is twenty, and it's shameful. It is embarrassing. And to talk about the budget as we have it right now, how the Board of Education had to agonize over what they wanted to take out so that it would not be further cut when they got here, means that the things that they wanted to fund, such as the mental health support in this town, the special services that are involved in helping students who have situations like that, it means that those things are not properly funded. It means that they are minimally funded. And I hope that in seeing the amount of energy and effort that they put in into those cuts and in thinking about the kind of town that you want this to be, that you hear the people that are here today speaking and asking you, "Take the budget and please pass it." Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, hearing no other speakers, what I'd like to do is just say that we're gonna, we're gonna be around. We'll come down and stand out in front of the stage. If anyone would like to come talk to us personally or ask a question, the Board of Finance will, um, hang out down here for you. Uh, whether you're a town worker or a citizen, it doesn't matter, we're here. Uh, please come up and, uh, chat with us. We appreciate you being here. And for people who come up and speak, know that you, we do listen. If anything, we, we listen, and, um, that's why we're here. So each and every one of us, uh, thanks you for being, being here with us as we try and make this community the best we can. Thank you so much. Have a good night, and in one moment, we'll be down there to chat some more with anybody who may want to.